6:58 and we were returning from our executive session. And the city council may or may not take action on anything discussed in executive decision. And at this time, we're not going to take any action. So do I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. It is now 6:59 and we're going to move into the regular city council meeting. I call this meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. And a quorum is present. Could we please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And Ms. Jappett, would you please honor us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the government of which we represent. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Jappett. Next on the agenda is item two, which is the acknowledgements and presentations. I don't think that, but I will have to introduce this gentleman. He's been around the area for 30 years anyway. Substantially, the city manager of New Braunfels. We were lucky enough to get him for a period of time, which was a... Thank you, Mike, for your service back then, and thank you for the service that you're doing today. We were able to get Mike for an interim city manager until December the 31st. And so, Mike, would you stand up? I'm not sure if everybody... Maybe Don doesn't know you back there, Don Rochelle. But this is Mike Shans. I think everyone else knows him. Let's give him a hand, please. Welcome, Mike. We're glad to have you back. Secondly, I don't see him here, but we were going to have a presentation by Joaquin Castro, Legislative Updates. And I don't see that he's here this evening. We will get with his office and find out what's going on. The next item is the street and infrastructure update. Rick, would you mind giving a brief update of what's going on, please?
Good evening, council. I'm going to give you an update on two areas of the city, the street repairs that are getting done. First of all, we know we have Easyville on the construction site here on the north side as to working on West Castle Lane and East Castle Lane as to... We just did a walkthrough yesterday, all the way from South Winston, all the way to Zonia. And this was all doing to make sure we found out where everything would be doing the mill and overlays because some of the areas are very low on asphalt when your normal pavement should take at least two inches. Some of it's about an inch, maybe inch and a half. If we're lucky, some of them have the two inches. And so have to be very careful onto the areas that we're going to have to do the milling. So then we'll get that credit on that side because of the fact that the number was involved with a total full payment of milling and overlay. So the areas that are not going to get, so then we get a little bit of credit to have that much more material for paving. And that paving will be starting on the 12th. We're going to start backwards, or Easyville's going to start backwards because of the concern with St. George is going to be opening on the 22nd. So we want to make sure that we get in there and get out for the drop-offs of the parents, for the kids there. Right now, they... We're trying to interwork with the roofing company because of the hail damage they had there at St. George. But everything is working out pretty good on that. And to let you know that that is where that's at on West Castle and East Castle. And the next movement towards Mimosas and Cremaria, they're already doing videoing on the main sewer lines to go ahead and start looking to start putting in laterals on that area, on those areas. And also too, Adobe is also getting started. But they're going... They had one concern prior to the main sewer lines because of the fact that AT&amp;T is there in that area. So they're having to do probing to find out where all that ducts are at for that, any type of excavating and not damaging any AT&amp;T communication there for new installments of that sewer main and laterals that are going to be going on Adobe. Excuse me. The next company... Oh, also, I forgot to give that one update about the manholes on Mimosas. So because we know that West Castle, East Castle are ready for pavement. Mimosas is the next area as to all the manhole because there was a lot of construction there because first we had one manhole already constructed and planned out for engineer to place in, but it had to get reviewed because of the entrance on the sides and everything and everything that was coming in. So they had to reschedule another manhole to be made. So if you're looking at why is it taking so long? That was one of the... That one reason there and also too because of the weather. So we got a little bit of holdback on that. But everything's already done on that and so they'll just start doing any type of movement on Mimosas as well. On the second contracting company, which is Atlas Construction Company, which is starting off on Atwater, they started on the 8th to do the televising on their main sewer lines there. And they just started today to start cutting in to start doing excavating on Wednesday, Thursday, I'm sorry, of this week. So everything is going pretty good on that as well. If you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Rick, I think first of all, I want to thank you for taking over the new responsibility of, you know, directly working with the contractors and moving forward with everything you did. It's excellent. I'm getting emails, calls, a lot more positive than negative now.
Thank you.
Mr. Squire.
Yeah, a couple of things. And I had the opportunity to talk with the project manager, Easyville also, Rick. And I may have talked to them after you did too. So one of the things I requested is, is on some of these streets that we... That the start dates are fluctuating because of the other issues. As an example, you know, the hail damage that happened to the church...
St. George.
To St. George pushed back east and west Castle Lane. And they just couldn't... They couldn't get in there because they had to allow the contractor to repair the hail, repair the roof. So but their schedule is unfortunately at the, you know, it varies based on the weather and based on other issues that they find. AT&amp;T being another one on Adobe, like you mentioned. So but so Adobe, as you mentioned, just and I think I want to make sure you mentioned that Adobe will begin first week of September as far as the actual construction. Right now, they're tentatively working on that. Then Cremaria and Zonia. Cremaria is scheduled to start the second week of October with Zonia immediately to follow that, as I understand. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also, Danube and Gladiola, that's scheduled to start the third week of November with finalization by the middle to end of December. And at that point, this project should be 99.99% complete, which is some minor items they've got to do. You mentioned Atwater. The, as I understand, the work that's going on in Atwater is from where to where?
Okay. It will start just on the other side of Buckery, going towards Blanco, about 100 feet and going all the way down to the bend of Atwater. And that will be the whole replacement of a new main sewer line there and new laterals.
And that part of that is going to correct the issue with those protruding manhole covers?
Most definitely, yes. It will take care of that because all of that is eroding down at the bottom and making that sink on the sides.
Okay. All right. Good enough. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Did any of the rest of council have any questions or comments for Rick? Thank you very much. Mr. Shans, you okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I signed up for this agenda.
You sure did. Mr. Dooling, if you'd come forward, please.
And I'd be happy to do it in the non-agenda, but I didn't want to get caught in a legal tussle.
Due to the fact we have so many signed up? Take your time.
I just wanted to report back again, like I did last month, in walking on Twin Leaf, right opposite 135 Twin Leaf, there's a new... A crack has opened up in that street. So, you know, and I don't know really what to say about this whole cracking issue other than I think Clark Company ought to be sued if we're going to have new attorneys doing things for us. I mean, I just think it's the worst paving job I've ever seen in my life. And my father was a road contractor, so I do know about building highways. And, you know, cracks just opening up everywhere. I realize it's dry, drought and all of that, but honest to Jesus, it's just beyond belief. And every time I walk somewhere, I see another one where they did work. So that's really all I have to say about street update. I didn't know if Rick was going to go into that or not. But I will just come back and report to you every time because we're spending millions of dollars and have cracked streets. It just doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Dooling. Rick, can we make sure that we follow up on that? We've got... We've got notes written up here, but let's take a look at that and make sure that we have an answer on that by the next meeting, please. And Gladiola, too. Chief, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about where we're at on National Night Out again, please?
No problem, Mayor, council. As we all heard last council meeting, October 4th, National Night Out. We're looking for people to host block parties. We have seven registered currently. If anyone is interested, please contact Captain Siemens, Mary Bell Mendoza. We have registration forms here at the office. Real easy to sign up. Don't do it at the last minute. September 23rd is the deadline so we can get you the appropriate material for your particular block party if you choose to host one. We have plenty. We welcome as many as we can get. It's a great time for the community and police engagement. So please, if you're interested, contact Police Department, October 4th.
Thank you so much, Chief. The next item on the agenda was to talk about the budget workshop and hearings. I would ask you to please stay tuned to our city website and also our Facebook page. We'll also be building a Twitter page here pretty soon along with Instagram. And we will be announcing those meetings in September. I think one of them is the 14th and the 19th, but we have some public hearings and things that we want to work on and dates. So we'll be posting on those as well as the board out here at City Hall. Next item is item F, which is Concert in the Commons, CHO. We have a very unique band this time. And John has got together with one of our local residents, lives over on Chalamar. And they'll be paying... It is on our website and also our Facebook page. So I'd like our very own Public Works employee, Jacob Anderson, is going... Is in the band also. So not only... I guess we've got a bunch of musicians around here. We've got Jerry and then we've got Rick, some of your guys. And Chief, you've got to step up, you know, to the plate and see if we can get the... Okay. All right. But anyway, these things are growing and growing, as you know. Last time, I think we had over 100. Before that, it was 75. We're growing. So like for you to come to those. Item G is back-to-school picnic with the mayor. If you would visit our Facebook page and also our city website, it'll tell you the dates and it'll also be sent out on Twitter. So with that said, I'm encouraging everyone to start using our website as an information forum. And we have two new people in charge of it. Kim is going to help with it and we're also going to have Mary Bell in our police admin. And they're going to be directing our communication from the city out through those media outlets. The next item is citizens to be heard. And on that, we have Mr. William Bueller.
William Bueller, 108 Prince Drive. My message is thanks and appreciation to the Police Department and Rick Carata in Public Works because one early morning late last week, my wife and I heard noises in our living room. And dispatcher dispatched Sergeant Spear and several other officers and encountered a couple of raccoons in our living room. Came down the chimney, through the firebox and took up residents behind a picture in our living room. And thank goodness the officers didn't have to use their shotguns or anything. And Rick persuaded the item, the intruders to leave. And but we do thanks greatly for... It was before 6 o'clock in the morning. And so I commend the fast response and the good services that we receive for our tax dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller.
Thank you.
We're glad you survived that attack. Rick, thank you for fighting off that raccoon. Mr. Brother Dooling, you're also on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brother William Dooling, 201 Gladiola Lane. And this is really, I'm just so happy to see Mike back here. I had worked very closely with him before, so I want to welcome you back to the city. I wish it were longer. This is a process question. I got the information I was looking for this afternoon, but my item I want to highlight is, and you just said, Mayor, we want to use the website as an information device. And obviously, that's a correct thing to do and it's needed. However, there's a lot of information that doesn't get there. And then there's no way to get it because we sort of depend, well, that's where it's going to be. But it's not. And on my street, there's a yellow sign for an architectural... Pardon me, a Board of Adjustment meeting on August 17th. That's a week from tomorrow. Those things are posted, I don't know, some 60 days ahead of time, those signs go up to give. And it would occur to me that signs posted like that are intended to let people know something is going on and... But you just see the sign. So then you have to go find out, well, what's going on? The most logical place to go would be the website, under agendas. However, even today, there is no agenda posted on the website for next week's meeting, which is only seven days away. Now, I came down here to get the information two weeks ago, but was unable to do so because people were on vacation and nobody seemed... The person here didn't know, couldn't... Okay. So nothing happens. And I'm just so thrilled to see Mike here because I remember when I was a member of the Board of Adjustment, we got it... When somebody filed a request, two or three days later, we got a packet. And it wasn't by internet. A police officer brought the packet to your house and said, this meeting... Okay, here you are. That gave you weeks and weeks and weeks of time to do your homework, investigation, whatever, be prepared for the meeting. But even for citizens, but you know, it just seems like if somebody's asking for something on an agenda item, why can't it be public knowledge? It's just so difficult sometimes to get information out of the city of Castle Hills. And I'm not saying it's a personal thing. I think it's a systemic thing. It's a process thing. But it needs to be looked at because in this day and age of instant communication, to not be able to find out what's going on from a posting that's been up for almost two months really doesn't jibe with what should be going on. And I don't have the answer and I've talked to Kimberly and I know it's a problem with the packets and all this, but the old way seemed to get it done. Somebody files something, you run off a few copies and out the door they go. And everybody knows what's going on. Now, we have all this instant communication and technology and we can't find out what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Shans, could you look into that, please, and make sure that we... And Kimberly also, make sure that as we're moving forward with, you know, our meetings coming up and things like that and also our paperless program that we communicate, we may even have to send out a card when we actually get the paperless program up and running to inform the... Make sure the residents know. And again, Mr. Shans, thank you for jumping in the middle of this and making sure that we get this up and cover what we failed to do in the past couple of months. Thank you. Okay. Since we only had two people sign up, we're going to be a little lenient here. And anybody else that wants to speak under citizens to be heard is welcome to come forward. Yes, ma'am?
Mayor, city council, I'm Anita Fernandez, Chief of Staff for State Representative Diego Bernal. And I just made it by the skin of my teeth tonight, so thank you so much for allowing us to be here. I came from another event. I just wanted to give a brief update on what we're doing in our office. We have finished our school visits of all the 55 public schools in District 123. And we will be releasing a report probably in the next couple of weeks on the findings and the details of those visits. And so we will make sure that it is shared with you all and with all of our constituents. We also have some flyers and I appreciate you all allowing us to leave the information on the table for you. We have an upcoming event this Saturday, August the 13th. It will be from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Laurel Heights United Methodist Church. And it is on the rising prices of prescription drugs. And we are doing it co-sponsoring and co-hosting with Congressman Doggett and also Senator Jose Menendez. And so we hope that if it's something that you feel is relevant to you all, that you join us for that event. And then we also left some information on anti-slap and slap laws. And so please feel free to take a look at that information. And if you have any questions or any of your constituents have questions regarding that, they can reach out to our office directly. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And please tell Diego, thank him very much for his reaching out to us and us back to him and bringing the residents and the citizens of this area a little closer with yourself. And of course, Jose Menendez also reached out and we'll... We very much appreciate it. Tell him hello from the city of Castle Hills.
I will. Thank you very much, Mayor.
We're moving on to item four, which is consider the approval of the July 2016 Treasurer's Item B, consider the approval of the July 11th, 2016 Special Council Meeting. These are on the consent agenda. Do we have any items that need to be pulled or wanted to discuss by council? Thank you very much. All right. On the consent agenda, on the two items I read, do I have a motion? Do we have a second? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, council. Moving on to item five, which is acknowledgement receipt of the 2016 Second Quarter Investment Do we have a motion and a second for this item so we can open it up for discussion, please? Second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Let's start on the right this time. Douglas. This is item five on the agenda, consider the receipt of the 2016 Second Quarter Investment Report.
I attended a workshop in Austin recently. It was very informative, this, what had to be done. And one of the things that has to be done is what you have before you, a statement of compliance of the investment portfolio. You're going to get more timely reports probably every three months as opposed to just moving along. So I'll be giving a report every three months. And it made me understand even more how much the finance director here in this city, how much work she actually does. And it's a big job. But anyway, tonight, all we're looking at is the investment report.
Thank you, Douglas. Mr. Paul, do you have anything? Mr. Squire?
Yeah, Douglas, have you agreed to and signed this report or intend to?
I've already signed it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Mr. Daggett, did you have any questions or comments, please? Mr. Trevino? Thank you very much. Okay. Do we... We have a motion? We have a second on the table to acknowledge the receipt. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, council. Item number six, consider the resolution R-2016-08-09, Resolution Adopting a City of Castle Hills, Texas Investment Policy. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Thank you. Mr. Gregory? Do you have any comments? Okay. Mr. Paul? Mr. Squire?
Yeah. This, the investment policy, this proposed investment policy, is this replacing an existing policy of... Is this a brand? So are there any substantial changes or substantive changes to it?
No.
Okay. It's all questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mr... Okay. Mr. Daggett says no. Mr. Trevino?
Mr. Douglas, how often is this updated? Do you know? Do you know? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Shans, anyone? Kim, you have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. So we have a motion. We have a second on the table. All in favor? It is unanimous. All right. We're moving on to item seven. Discuss and update information on the city of Castle Hills Parking Lot Repaving Concept Project.
Yes, I was the one that wanted to put this on the agenda and I would ask the city manager to prepare a report to be presented to us next month detailing the timeline of what went on. And I would also like the city attorney to add a supplemental report detailing whether or not it is appropriate to use funds in the street maintenance funds for the repaving of a parking lot. And I would appreciate this be presented back to the council next month. And I think that's the only way to have a... I think it is a better way to have a clear and concise understanding of exactly what went on from an independent individual, if that's appropriate for the rest of the council.
Do we... This isn't an action item, so Mr. Shans? Turn the... That helps a whole lot. My goodness. I understand the guidance from council and we will do that. I will have it for you next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brennan, do you have any comments on that or...
No, sir. I think that's a good plan.
Mr. Henry?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Good. Oh, yes. Mr. Squire?
One of the things that came up, Mr. Douglas, you brought up a great point about the, I guess, the legality of utilizing that fund?
No. The appropriateness.
In what way?
The reality would say... Can or you can't do it. Appropriateness would say, is it reasonable to do it? Is it appropriate if other cities done it that way?
Okay. I guess that's reasonable. I'm just trying to make sure that we're asking for the right information. So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. So we are tabling this? Is that what we're doing? Okay. Do we need to take a vote on that? Thank you. All right. Yes. Done. Okay. Item number eight, consider accepting the retention agreement for the Law Office of Ryan Henry for general matters, prosecution and/or certain litigations. Mr. Brennan?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Henry and his assistant have provided very... Mr. Mayor, Mr. Henry, Henry and his assistant have provided very valuable services to us for the last few months, including a service as the prosecutor in the municipal court and prosecution of appeal cases from the municipal court downtown, as well as some litigation. And it would be appropriate to have an agreement with Mr. Ryan as to what his services will be, how they're engaged, and what the cost to the city will be. And with the permission of the council, I think it would be a good idea for you and Mr. Ryan, and I will assist to develop and, you know, work out a retention agreement or an employment agreement with Mr. Ryan, setting forth the details of his engagements and get that back to you for approval at City Council possibly next, next month.
Okay. So as far as this agenda item is concerned, although it is an action item, the action would only be to basically for the mayor and two attorneys to put together something to bring back to council. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I think that's the right way to, to handle this.
Okay, good. Do I have a motion on the table? Do it. Do you have a second? Motion? Discussion?
Mr. Brennan, the terms of this agreement are stated at the bottom. Are these terms identical to what we have with you?
Not really, because what Mr. Ryan is helping with are specific engagements, not the general legal representation of the city as a city attorney normally functions. And I think we need to, you know, have an agreement that specifies and clarifies each of the things that Mr. Henry can or will be doing for the city with the cost.
Under the paragraph labeled "General," the line says, "Therefore, this firm will continue to assist in areas of general legal advice, et cetera, et cetera." Who will make the determination of when his assistance is required?
Well, that's one of the things that's important to have in this agreement, whether it be the city council. Kind of depends on what, what comes up and also how quick it has to be responded to. Some matters, I think, would be appropriate for the city council to decide, some possibly the mayor or the city manager, probably the city manager.
So that will be spelled out in this proposal?
Yes, sir.
Under litigation, the first line, "This firm has been assigned both covered and uncovered litigation claims against the city." I assume, who were they, who assigned them to him?
You mean which cases are?
No, it says they have been assigned covered and uncovered cases. Were they assigned by you? Were they assigned by the council? Who assigned them?
Well, I think in the past, the city manager probably made most of the assignments. Mr. Henry also, as you know, does work for TML and has handled some litigation involving the city at the cost or expense or engagement of TML. But Mr. Ryan has also helped with a couple of other matters that I think were probably handled by the city man, or engaged by the city manager.
And this will be spelled out also in the agreement?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for those questions, Douglas. I want to make sure too that when we, when we bring this back, that, you know, that we don't hogtie the city manager in, in certain areas. There, you know, due to our extreme amount of litigation these days, I want to, you know, make sure, and Mr. Brennan is, is comfortable with the fact that we, you know, bring on the services of Mr. Henry. And he's, he's done a very good job in, in some, some cases that have been very critical and some in the future that will be possibly even more critical. So I just want to make sure that when, when council considers that, that, you know, it gets spelled out and, you know, we're all comfortable with the fact that we don't hogtie our city manager to, because it's, you know, to not be able to do something just waiting for council approval. So we have a...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan, one of the things when I read this over the weekend, we have an alternate for prosecutor on Thursdays in the event Mr. Henry isn't here or whatever the case may be. And doing our contract and working with Mr. Henry, do we have some sort of an obligation if in fact we need a second one on site? Part of his engagement letter is requesting that his assistant, or his associate, I should say, comes with him. And if that's the case, are we stepping on anybody's toes or are we stepping on our toes by not recognizing the alternate that we've already approved of?
That's one of the things we need to make sure that we procedurally handle correctly. You know, the workload in the municipal court, as I understand it, has increased significantly since the city now enforces laws outside of the city. And as, that has resulted in more cases in the municipal court. And we're gonna have to make sure that the, there's appropriate staffing for that, whether it's through Mr. Henry, somebody assisting him, an alternate, and the same with the judge. You know, we, we need to get straight on both of those issues.
Would it be good in that particular case to also, for Mr. Shans to discuss it with our judge, to see his thoughts on it or something?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that, that when we make a move, it's, it's appropriate and it falls within the bounds of what we've set up.
Absolutely. That's very important.
Mr. Squire?
Yeah, just to follow along on, on Mr. Frank's question is, you know, do we have to go out for an RFP or an, or RFQ or RFP on this? Just to, just to make sure that we, we do not have to do, or do or do not, I guess, let's, let's follow the, the proper protocol on that.
I, I don't think we need to do a new one because, well, as far as municipal court's concerned, I think the council has already approved Mr. Ryan as the prosecutor.
Do we approve him or his office?
Pardon?
Him or his office at that point? And that's the question.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to work through.
Well, I think, I think it was him that was appointed. And that, that's one of the details we've got to get worked out.
All right. Appreciate you.
I don't think we need a new RFP, though.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Daggett, did you have any questions or comments for?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Trevino? Of course.
This is not for approval of anything. It's approval to accept next month or whenever.
That's all it is.
We'll go over that.
We'll get together with Mike and I and Mr. Henry. And we'll put, put a framework together for you guys to, to pick through and then figure out what you want to do. Okay. We have a motion and we have a second, I believe, on the table? All in? Excuse me? We're tabling the item. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Item nine. I am, I am pulling this item, and the reason being is because we want to make sure that the master plan? It's tabled, right?
Yes, you do. The motion is tabled?
Okay. We have a, do we have a motion? We have a motion? We have a second? No, wait a minute. Let's, let's start over. Okay. Do I have a motion to table this item, which is?
I have Daggett.
Okay.
Place two, two motions, and I have to give the place one.
Okay. All in favor to motion, to table? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next one is consider the appointment of the members of the Master Plan Committee. A legal question has come up, whether or not it is a mayor's committee or whether it is a city committee. And so what we will do is we've turned that over to the lawyers. And we will stick with your nominations, counsel. Thank you very much. Don, I apologize, sir, for you coming up today. I did text you, but maybe your phone's down or something. Thank you for being here. We will, we will, of course, move forward with the nominees as you were presenting them and at the next meeting. But we do need to make sure that this committee is handled in a proper way. So with that said, it is an action item. So can, do I have a motion to table until the September meeting?
We'll move the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay. The next item is consider the appointment of members of the Crime Control Prevention District. First of all, let's, I've been contacted by two council members. We'll start off with the first one, which is Councilman Squire. Did you have, want to?
Yes, I have a nomination. I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Conroy Davidson. Conroy and her fiance are newer residents of our city. They moved in the first of this year. She's originally from, I'm just gonna give a quick bio to say, oh, no. She's originally from Oklahoma City, moved to San Antonio back in 1986, graduated from Trinity University, and then went on and graduated from St. Mary's University of Law. She served as an intern, intern for the Texas Supreme Court Justice, Jack Hightower. And after she obtained her J.D., she moved to Galveston for a short period of time and then returned back to San Antonio. She has, she's been in several partnerships. She currently has a solo, solo law practice. She's board certified, legal specialization in civil appellate law. She's also completed her mediation training and it back in, back in 2000, 2006. Personal experience, Conroy is a very passionate about her work. She represents individuals, she represents businesses, also represents governmental entities and over, over the years. Her hobbies include yoga. She's also an avid exerciser, a chef, reads tremendously as, as in a book room, and she also, they also love to travel the world.
Thank you. So we're nominating, I'm sorry, your first name?
Conroy.
Conroy.
C-O-N-R-Y. O-N-P-L-Y.
Got it.
Davidson.
Got it. I have it here. I just want to make sure I got it right. Okay. Besides Mr. Trevino, I didn't hear from anybody else. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir. I wanted to nominate David Olivares. He lives over on Cobblestone. He's lived in the city for about two years now. He lives there with his wife and his three children, twins, twin girls and a boy. David has been getting involved. He helped with our, it was a 5K that we just had, and he, for Fiesta Castle Hills, and he stepped up quite a bit. And I just wanted to make sure that we can continue to have that kind of involvement.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Douglas, did you want to? Two? I believe it was John Kenny and Mr., and Carmen. I mean, Mr. Beeler, sorry. It's gonna be hard shoes to fill. Okay. Mr. Paul, did you have anybody to bring forward or?
Last minute, they had to back out, so I didn't want to push them forward this time.
Okay. Douglas, we'll circle back around. Did you have anybody you wanted to bring forward before we vote these two people in? Thank you very much. Well, I'm sure we'll have a, a full-blown ceremony for Mr. Beeler, but I sure wouldn't want to be these two people trying to fill your shoes. He's been a member of the board for how long, Mr. Beeler?
Since the beginning.
That's the beginning. Wow. That's, that's huge. Done a good job, too. So with that said, let's take them individually. Con, Conroy Davidson? Do we have a motion? I guess we do. Second? Okay. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. And David Olivares?
Olivares.
Olivares? Do we have a second? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Kim, will you send a letter out to these two individuals? I'm sure you have their addresses. If you don't, get with the council people who need to provide that and tell them, thank them very much for their service, and we'll see them at the first meeting. Okay. Item nine. This is consider creating a permanent position of the, of the permit admin clerk. Do we have a motion and a second for discussion? Second?
I'll say it.
Okay. We'll start on Mr. Trevino's side. Did you have any questions or comments regarding this?
Well, as we discussed during the budget workshop, court has seen a substantial increase. And as I understand, we have a temp in there right now that has been a substantial amount of help. I think that if we could use a permanent position to... I'm sorry, excuse me. I misspoke. I retract that.
This is, this is for Kit's position over in permitted and admin, which, which the court overflows to, I think is what, when you were, when you were looking at that particular situation. Yes?
I think the reason we're explaining is that it was a position, didn't his council bring it forth for just one year? And now we're trying to, we recognize.
That's correct. This position was, we had been paying as a temp for one year, and now we're bringing her on board. The reason these two positions, I guess, were a little confusing is our Finance Director has also, in the recent budget, which council will deal with, bring in someone else to help her on the finance side. We're doing a considerable amount of cross-training now. In fact, it's in the task list and project list for Kim, who has taken on new responsibilities in the city secretary to do, and along with Mr. Shans, his professionalism, to, to help guide this cross-training to where if something happens, we, you know, we're not stuck in a situation where we have to go out for a temp anymore. So I think that's, Councilman Trevino, I think that's where the, the lines got crossed there, is we're gonna also be coming back in the near future to, to talk about a part-time situation for Suzanne and also the, the court side because of the influx of business. Okay, so? Of course. Mr. Daggett, did you have any questions or? Okay, thank you. Mr. Squire?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. And again, Mr. Paul's right. That was the one that was created some time ago as a temporary, because it just, the volume of work in admin was just too much that they could, that they could do. And if anybody was out, then effectively it would almost close, close shop because you really had only one person up there at, at that point in time. Mr. Shans, I know you've been here, and I know it's a very unfair question, so, so I will, I will grant you that. But you've had a chance to see our admin staff handle some of the load that, that they, that they've taken on so far. Do you concur that this is an, an appropriate item?
I very definitely do. Yes, you're, you're correct. I've observed personally only for about eight days, but I've looked at the workload that they have accomplished over the last several months, and it's, it's impressive. So yes, I do concur.
Thank you for answering that very unfair question. I appreciate that.
Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments? Douglas, I'm sure you had a question or two.
What are we paying right now for this temporary position? What will we be paying for a permanent position?
I don't, I do not know what we would pay prior.
Well, if this was a temporary, a, a brand-new temporary position, there's no, would the salary remain the same? I guess that's the question. I think we ought to know what we're paying before we create a position.
It was in the budget, just so the...
Yeah, I, I think the intent, once this position was created, is to continue the salary that she currently... Yeah, I think the intent, once this position was created, is to continue the salary that she currently has. And that is the same salary that we've been going over in the budget workshops, which is $36,000.
And just so the citizenry knows, that was in the packet in the budget.
That is correct.
So, yes, we do know what we're doing up here, Douglas. Anybody else? Okay. Waiting for Frank. Well, how about them cowboys? All right. Frank, we're getting ready for a vote here. So, with that said, thank you for joining us. With that said, the, the item was consider a permanent position of the permit and admin clerk. And it's the one that was in the budget that we talked about yesterday. So, with that said, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. The city manager report. What we're gonna do is, we're going to do each departmental report. And kinda like we used to do it a while, a while back, and Mr. Shans will, will, I'm sure at the, at the next meeting, wanna participate in that. But with that said, Rick, you wanna start on a departmental report on what's going on? Of course, you already said something about your streets, so that part has already been done. Is there anything you would like to share with us?
Uh, no, sir, none that I.
Not at this time?
This time.
Chief? You're good. Everything was in the packet was what you had to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, hey, Jerry. Good to see you over there. Jerry, was there anything you wanted to comment or tell us about? Things that, okay, good.
I have something for you next month.
Good, good. Well, that's a good sign. Okay. Announcements by the council. Wow, record time. Mr. Trevino, did you have any comments or you would like to bring before the council?
I just wanted to add that we have the mayor's picnic coming up on, didn't mean to steal your thunder, but just to reiterate that on August 27th. And it'd be really good if everybody come out there, because it's a good chance to meet your neighbors and get together before the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino, for stealing my thunder. Mr., Mr. Daggett, did you have any?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. Squire, did you have any?
I do. And it's more of a, kind of a request. But, you know, one thing that's got brought up, and it's one thing that I've, I've experienced, too, in the past. And, and we put a lot of effort into the, into the website to make it a, a good venue for, for communication. Also to where we can, we can monitor it or administer it locally. Real quick, one of the things I like to see on there is the continued updating of the approximate start dates of, of the streets that were, that are being worked on. I think that's very important, and I could not find where, where the current updates were. And I think that's very important that we, that we continue that. I'm sorry, looking at you, but. Second of all, on the, on the website, you know, and it was brought up about, about making sure agendas are on there. That's, that's critical. We need, we need to make sure we, and we show those on there. And I really, and I appreciate that, that getting brought up. But let's, let's continue to make sure we have the resources to keep that website updated for the, for the residents of our community. And so, I appreciate that, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments for the audience?
Yes, just one at this point in time, which is kinda relevant or not relevant. But I was at the two outings on the commons, and I think so many people stayed away from them on Saturday night because they started at 7:30 and they thought that it was still too hot. I think those, that the citizens that were there enjoyed it very much, because at that time of day, even more so now, the sun starts getting down behind the trees, and there's generally a nice slight breeze, and it's quite comfortable. So, I hope with all the effort, and I wanna thank the homeowners, the Castle Hills Association, that's been putting this on. I wanna thank them for that, and I think it would be great if more and more people showed. And I think you'll find it's a very comfortable evening.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments, please? Thank you very much. I had a few. First of all, I wanna springboard a little bit on what Mr. Trevino said and also what Mr. Squire said. Our website is going to become a very important part of our communication in this city. That's why we've assigned a person to it. Part of her responsibilities are now to, to, and she just happens to be in police admin, is to bring this up to, to the social media aspect. She's, she's working on her master's right now at one of the local colleges, and it's Mary Bell. I've assigned her to do that along with Kim and, and also Janet with Mr., with Mr. Shans looking over their shoulder. Facebook also, I can't tell you how important social media is today and how it, how perception is acquired by that. We've talked to Clear Channel. We have a certain amount of time that we put up on our billboards on 410. We will be advertising our Facebook page on 410. We'll be advertising our website on 410. For instant communication, we're gonna, we're gonna move to Twitter. Okay, not a lot of people have this sort of thing. But what I would like to see, too, is a couple of the people came up to me this last week and wanted to join Instagram. Okay, Instagram is something where we can actually take instant pictures, send them into our Facebook page, and they automatically go onto our Facebook page. Now, obviously, that Facebook page will become our new social, social media. But we'll also, as Mr. Brother Dooling said, have the paper if we need it. We're gonna post it out here on, on the billboard out here. And we're also gonna do a better job of putting things in, in advance, what's gonna happen. That's very important for, for people to know what's going on. If you haven't gone to our Facebook page, I mean, to our website and, and taken a look at it, it's got links to our Facebook page now, and also has council meetings on there, agendas, a lot of stuff on there.
But the information is not there. I went to the Board of Adjustments this evening before coming over here. There is no information about the meeting next.
On that one item.
Well, I'm just saying, the whole point of communicating, why do we post those signs on the street? It's to give notice that something kind of important is going on, but there is no way to find out.
There's no doubt about it, Mr. Dooling. There was a, there was a mess up on that one item. There's no doubt about that. And I'll see that it gets corrected. Okay? But I think that in the, in the future, because we are moving in this direction, that you'll see more, a more efficient, a more efficient situation. Also, in the budget meeting, we've got two of our employees going to other cities. One of them is the city of Hollywood Park, also the city of San Antonio, to go paperless in our city. It's going to speed up our way that we do things as far as processing our tickets, processing our permits, processing our admin. It'll not only, it'll not only save on labor, but it'll bring the efficiency of our city up to the fifth century, anyway. Excuse me, 21st century. Be able to communicate with each other. The police do it. We're, we all have the ability to do it now. I believe most of us, all of us are getting the council packets now electronically. Some have asked for paper, which is fine. That's not, that's not a big deal. And I just, there's, there's a lot of good things happening. John, with your street program, I don't know how many emails I've gotten regarding this, phases that we broke it down into phase one and phase two. And now we're gonna go into phase three. Rick, you've taken on that additional responsibility. Obviously, it's working, 'cause I even had a contractor complain to me the other day. So, that means it's working. I'm getting emails about the new code compliance officer, about how mean he is. That's even good. Okay, 'cause that means he's out there working. So, with, not real bad ones, just, you know, the most hated man in the city, but, you know. Anyway, with that said, I think that if you have any, Brother Dooling, I'd love to talk to you on the, on the social media thing. If you have any ideas other than the fact to just get it on there, so we'll know what's going on?
Well, just while we're having, but the other thing, you have to be cognizant. I am 75 years old, I can go look on a website and download and print it up. But a lot of our citizens cannot. So, you have to take that into consideration. This is not a demographic in this city of 20-somethings. They are moving in, so maybe you know they'll be the majority. But a lot of our citizens don't have access to electronic information. So, it has to be available.
I think that's a good point. Would you, would you visit with Kim and come up with ideas on how you would? Because the days of the past, and, you know, the budgets that we're dealing with now, the postage, everything involved like that, we have to move to electronic communication.
Well, I understand that, but electronic is different than social media.
Right.
It's a huge difference. And most of our elder population is not gonna be involved in social media.
Okay.
They may be able to get electronic. I have friends who ask me to download stuff and fax it to them. I know fax sounds like a dinosaur. The lawyers use faxes.
Sure. We're also moving, that's a great idea.
There are ways to get information where even if, well, I can fax it to you, you don't have to mail it. It doesn't cost a dime.
Sure. We got a phone and we got a fax machine, so.
So, there are ways to do it, but I just think that, and maybe it's we're caught in the transitional period. I understand that. But it just, I try to look at things from an intuitive standpoint on that one issue, that if you're trying to give notice, then people have to be able to get the information. And if it's not on their website, then there's gotta be another way. That's that's all.
Thank you. Okay, with that said, do we, thank you, Brother Dooling. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second? Thank you.
You gonna go get something to eat? You gonna go get something to eat or something? Have a short.
Pretty short, so.
Yes, if I had a coffee. Posting it down. Yes. Or he gave it to Douglas. I wanted to give Douglas a book, so we can see what she said.
Of course.
Or he wanted, so he did the reading.
Here?
Yeah. And I said, John, this is not the right time, because we're not there. Let's wait until we're there.
I get it, I get it.
He's, you know, he, he wants to strike out, kinda like you. He wants to strike out and correct the issue, so you understand that. And I was that way, too, when I was your age last year.
All I'm saying is.
I get it, I get it.
You know, I was on Board of Adjustments. They gave us the packet on Friday, and we had the meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday. Duh. And besides that, if it's on the website, that means you have to download it, or you open it up. You don't have to download it, you just open it up.
Agenda, or are you talking, are you saying agenda or package? You mean the, just the agenda?
One page, that's all.
Just like the legal note. Pretty much that information. Did you get one for AGB? Cause I, I. I'll type your email address. I actually, one time I sent one to you and it was. I guess it was obviously a street. They had to cut your place to have this. And then develop the ideas. Well, they're almost done now. That was a while ago. They were just replacing that gas.
But see, I, I.
And I thought.
But I looked that up and I found out about it.
So, Richie, that was the same way that I chose to wait on Peter's birthday of the week before the hearing.
Right. And I looked at my issues and put it up in the Kios for you. We don't screen those every day.
Oh, yeah, that was one of the things.
And I said, okay, they're doing.
Yeah, we did it right then.
Cause I used to be on both our committees, you know, before.
Okay, okay. And I knew that. I read it. Okay.
But it's just that, I try to look at things from a just intuitive standpoint. We put up this sign because we want people to know.
Right.
Want them to know what, oh, what this guy's asking. How do they find it out? Well, we sort of can't. See, that's, that's how, so how. My suggestion would be a tentative, which goes out. This is not, cause you do tentative agendas for the.
No, I don't, I don't do tentative until I post it. It only gets posted. I, I won't do tentative.
No, but I'm saying there are tentative agendas. It's like the draft copy.
Oh, my working copy.
Yeah, yeah. So, it can be, it can be, you know, how they put draft or tentative. This is not the final thing, but this is what these people are asking for. Cause some of them, they may withdraw the request.
That's right.
And then your final agenda, they won't be on it. But this way, people, I just think it'd be.
Yeah, no, I'll get Janet and the city attorney and see what things we can work out within ourselves. So, that way we can try to get a little bit better, more information out there on the web earlier. That's really your thing, it's getting.
That's all I'm saying is, so that then people aren't having, coming down and chew up your time to look at plans and this and that.
Right, right.
If they're not interested, but then if, like, on this issue, I am interested. I really think I do love looking at what they're asking for.
It might be, based on some of the other things we've been finding. But you can come here.
Where's Mike? Don't worry, don't worry. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is. Hello. I'm seeing you.
Did you still have your house down there?
No, we actually. And I walked by it all the time. I always think of my camera. Well, actually, I rode by there. Yeah. Well, it's gonna be. There's not more than seven. Right. And it was.
We don't have that.
We don't. Well, but it's gonna be a term, because for example, this was great. Best to say that nobody can find, nobody can find anything, but it's at least thirty years old. My understanding was, I'm crap, I'm not in the market, but they're around. Right now, the secretary of administration, but information I couldn't talk to. When I saw... Well, I think they're better off, and I said, wow, without, and I said, why is it so difficult to get a permit? So I think that's right. The house is just crosshairs and give and...
I actually buy your house in the...
You can have an office that's construction.
I'll tell you, cement traders and everything's called. Well, there's that other room just around the corner. All of this is crap. Tulsion, hip, and he's got his truck at the hip office. I'll even say that, so it's hard to see unless you're on the coming one, and, and anybody's on the front yard. Oh, yeah. He's been doing it, John, for years. Don't tell me, that's what I'm... John, you're a city council person. Yes, he can, because you, the city, doesn't do anything about it. Yes, he can, and he doesn't. Well, what I would say about, remember that one guy and that stuff with God, like...
We have more than one appliance out here.
If it, if it should... I'm trying to get the dark trip cut, you know that? And, and nobody's... Well, the trash in the front yard is so...
Oh, the alleys.
Alleys, there's so much help to do. It's, it's overwhelming, and that's a normal... Alleys we've never had in a whole time. No, I don't have, no, that's, that's what you do. Bearcat can do, why can't us? There are some limitations where ranchers, ranchers... But see, I, I, I understand the beginning where Rick says, well, I guess we'll just go out there and taxi them. I said, this is called construction.
When it comes in, the city comes in some residential way out. It comes in as none of those, there are five owners in there. I even called each one of them. They said, oh, no. We were just told, we mostly have been sold off.
Oh, no. Well, my, 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 my guy knows where.
Well, they said, you don't, but I was, I was in there for years, and we just, we were like, I mean, we haven't had rent.
Yeah, exactly. All the contractors, everything's done, and it's still... How many, how many times have you seen the carpet seller? Probably going up next month.
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Then everything is essentially vacant. Now, when it's, when it's grandpa, then you can't keep adding on, you can't, you know, like this time. Yeah, with the, yeah, and now it's totally your residence.
Right.
And you can't do that without permit, without areas, without going through the process.
That bad, it's a whole...
Yeah. And so that, that, that's why it's, it's only, it isn't coming up.
Well, I'm very tuned to the zoning bit. I was on it for so long, and all the, and I, I, I know the area, there's twenty-five houses.